One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one. A personnel matter concerning prospective candidates for employment. One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A three. Discussion involving acquisition or disposition of publicly owned real property. And one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A seven. Concerning consultation with legal counsel pertaining to real or probable litigation.
Second.
May I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Now, everyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Clons and the invocation by Councilman East.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please do so at this time. Heavenly Father, thank you for our many blessings, your guidance and your strength. We ask that you grant us wisdom in all that we do and that you would continue to bless our community. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Are there any modifications to the public session agenda? Don't think there is. Welcome the guests that I suppose are online. And let's start with our presentations and utility disconnect memo.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately you all are gonna have to deal with meetings like, uh, Mrs. Letha was wanting to do this presentation but is not feeling well. I do have a handout that I'll give you all at the end of this brief presentation, but I want to make sure that you all are aware, uh, and the public is aware, of the governor's moratorium on utility disconnects, which was a part of the latest General Assembly, uh, decisions, uh, the new moratorium was signed on the eighteenth of November, and will encompass all residential utility customers where the previous one, which was in effect, uh, only involved those utilities that were SEC regulated. Uh, the town, because it owns its own utility system, uh, did not have to have the moratorium applied to them, but in effect you all voluntarily did something for several months. Uh, this particular moratorium will affect us, public utilities are identified specifically in the, uh, budget bill, and will be in effect until the governor either determines that the economic and public health conditions have improved to a point where it can be released, or until at least sixty days after the state of emergency ends, whichever is sooner. Utility systems, like ours, with the rearages in excess of one percent of our operating budget could apply for an exemption, but that is not the case for the town. Uh, our figures are not that high at the moment. Within sixty days of the enactment, uh, on November the eighteenth, we have to notify all customers that are at least thirty days in arrears of the COVID nineteen relief repayment plan. The repayment plan is not to include any new deposits, fees, penalties, or have any eligibility criteria to them. The customer will have to complete an application and sign an affidavit saying that they are experiencing a financial hardship as a result of the, uh, COVID nineteen. The town has applied for, as of yesterday, which was the deadline we were given, uh, the state. Uh, we have applied for fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents in special cares act funds, uh, that the federal government has made available specifically for this purpose to help utility customers. Currently, we have seventy-one accounts that are at least thirty days in arrears and forty-seven that are at least sixty days in arrears. Should the town receive any of the utility relief funds, and we're not sure when we'll be advised of that, they've given us no date, we will have to apply the monies that we received to the most delinquent accounts first, so that those that are sixty days delinquent would be applied first, then thirty days if we had funds remaining from that fourteen thousand dollar allocation. We did not disconnect, just to give you a little bit of history, for non-payment for the months of March, April, or May of this year. This was your voluntary action at that time, uh, and, uh, we did not charge any penalties during that timeframe. On average, we disconnected fifty, a hundred and fifty to two, a hundred and seventy-five accounts per month. By the end of March, we had just under twenty-nine thousand dollars, over three hundred accounts due in outstanding utility bills. By the end of April, we had thirty-seven thousand, almost four hundred accounts outstanding, and by May, we had a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in outstanding bills. By the end of June, we had a hundred and seventy thousand outstanding, eighteen of which was at least two months past due. When we resumed disconnects in June, we only cut off for those accounts that were still past due for the months of March and April, and cut off a hundred and eight accounts, those accounts were at least two months behind at that point. In July, we cut off for those accounts that were past due for the latter two months, May and June, and cut off two hundred and forty. Cut offs have been on time from that point until now, so the numbers have been pretty good. But with the enactment of this moratorium, we expect to see the numbers of unpaid accounts to increase in a significant loss in revenue if we are not allowed to recapture bills for an extended period of time. And the repayment plans that are, um, indicated in the moratorium are to give, um, up to twenty-four months for people to pay, uh, any, uh, rearage. So, we certainly are gonna have a lot of paperwork, uh, that we're going to have to keep track of, uh, talk to, uh, probably more customers than we have previously in terms of, um, possible, uh, they would be eligible for disconnects, but we won't be disconnecting, but they do need repayment plans, and the money that's being made available is only for rearages through an October date, so I guess our concern is that we don't know what's gonna happen with accounts going forward, if there would be a second wave or phase of funding that would be available for those accounts. But I wanted to make sure that the council was aware, um, of this situation. I can tell you from personal experience, uh, when I was in another community and we, as this town did voluntarily, didn't do disconnects for several months, uh, many individuals who previously had been paying on time, elected to not pay because they knew they would not be disconnected. Every community has, uh, individuals who traditionally are disconnected, um, and end up paying reconnect fees and other kinds of things, but, um, this kind of a program, while it certainly is predicated on some good, um, reasons, you know, that people are suffering, it is gonna have an impact on your water sewer, uh, funds, uh, as we go forward. And we'll certainly try to keep you aware of just how that's happening and what magnitude on a monthly basis, but I did want you all to be aware of it because as soon as anything was published in the newspaper, we had individuals calling asking if they were gonna be disconnected. And we still don't have all the details, but we have now provided you with everything we know at this point. And I will get Dave to pass out to you a copy of what I have just had to read to you unfortunately, because I wasn't prepared to make the presentation tonight.
So, so what funding is available, is gonna be available through the federal government?
Federal government has made it available specifically for utility disconnects, and that money has been funneled to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And they're the ones that will be actually creating the forms, the forms aren't available yet, uh, that we will be using their draft form, uh, that we will be using as an application, and we'll have, uh, probably, uh, a statement where individuals will have to attest that they've had a hardship as a result of COVID. And then, as I just mentioned, uh, we'll receive as many applications as, uh, warranted, but the money will go first to those that have sixty days or more of a rearage and only fourteen thousand dollars. So, once the fourteen thousand dollars is gone, we're not gonna be able to assist financially in getting, uh, individuals current, uh, with their bills, and those who, uh, should be disconnected but will not be under the moratorium, we can set up these repayment plans, but those plans have limitations in terms of both, um, the, the client deciding how much they can afford to pay and being given, you know, a minimum of six months, as much as twenty-four months, to repay, and we're not sure what happens yet if someone's on a repayment plan and they fail to meet their obligations, that's something else that's still up in the air, but having just gotten this information just before the holidays and having individuals call finance and say, are we gonna be disconnected? I wanted you all to be made aware of this.
And based on the numbers you gave us from March, April, and May, it sounds like there's a real potential here for a tremendous revenue loss.
Yes, sir.
I think, you know, obviously, I think it's really important, I don't know what type of literature is out there to, to our water customers to make sure that, that we do everything that we can do to make the, the citizens understand that they will be held financially responsible for no matter what the circumstance at some point, and, you know, we'll still be legally obligated. It sounds like it just may be delayed, but eventually, you know, the more that we, you know, if nothing else to try and prevent, you know, a citizen from making the decision to, you know, for a short-term, short-term gain to find out a year from now or twenty-four months from now that now they're being held legally liable for something, you know, when it's not passed, you know, when, once it's passed that point, anything that we can do to prevent that is gonna benefit the citizen and benefit the town in every way possible. I don't know if there's anything that we can do beyond what's already been done to try and help communicate that, but, you know, it'd be real easy for someone to get short sighted and say, well, here's an opportunity for me, and not realize that they're gonna get hit with it later.
The only, um, thing that is actually waived from our traditional disconnect is that we can't put penalties or reconnect fees in with it, but the standard bill, whatever that is, would still be an obligation. And the community that I came from, uh, when the council saw how many people were not paying, and particularly, you know, those that perhaps had been even sometimes struggling to pay, but were paying on a regular basis, uh, they asked us, and we started sending out monthly letters, uh, to people to remind them of how much they had accumulated and that it was still gonna become due, payable, when the emergency was over with, or in this case, you know, as soon as a repayment plan was put in place, that they would have to start making payments. So, I agree with you that it's something that we need to communicate, and as soon as we have more details, particularly when we're able to see this application that is being developed, the state will try to do as an extensive public information campaign as we can.
So, strong hand up as much as a fan from the beginning.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I guess we'll move on. There's no public comments tonight. Um, should do the consent agenda, if you'll look over the minutes from November seventeenth, twenty twenty?
I just, I just had one minor adjustment, uh, it, uh, under roll call, I definitely was not present, but under councilman's present, it says I was present. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have held for this one. How's yours, Peter?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to read out the Tuesday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty, uh, council minutes with the correction to the presence of Mr. Brooks Dawson.
Second.
And can we get a roll call, please, sir? Uh, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
If we can move on to old business, that's the street naming ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty dash one one.
Before we move on, I want to say that I want to thank, uh, Mr. Quest and Barry and staff for putting together this ordinance. I think it's a, uh, excellent, uh, job of sort of putting together something that really makes a lot of sense, um, and, um, and I do want to mention, but I also think that, well, I think it's good, you know, we might find that we might want to change it, but I think we should put it in place, um, with the idea that if, if it does turn out to be, have any issues, that we can always amend it as appropriate, but that, I think it's good to have it on the books, um, so that we can move forward with it.
I would just add, your county attorney to the list of people that worked on that, because you remember, uh, last time he was suggesting that there was a way to simplify some of the language and not have repetitive language in different sections, so.
Yeah, and I did, uh, so, thank you. Mr. Regus as well, and unless there's other comments, um, I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash eleven. Ezra?
May I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And I would just mention the, uh, action that the council took, uh, at the last meeting, the naming of a portion of Main Street.
Yes.
That sign is up.
Yeah, thank you for that, I was gonna mention that.
Okay, and then we'll move on to U-DAG fund.
And, Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, you all have asked for some specific language from the auditors as it related, uh, to this matter that I had proposed, uh, that you all take action on, and so that is provided, uh, in the memo as well as the specific language highlighted on the attachments that came from the official government accounting.
So, would the motion be to transfer one million dollars from the U-DAG restricted balance in the general fund to unrestricted as it is considered to be unlikely to be repaid?
You get very.
Thank you.
It's a motion?
Uh, it is a motion.
Second. Can I have a roll call for that one? Mr. Penn? Mr. Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And now, move on to the manager's ordinance question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, just a few quick items. First of all, I want to give kudos to the public works, uh, staff and to Jordan over here for the virtual tree lighting that took place last, uh, Thursday. Uh, we found that Jordan has another talent, you know, he's now live streaming, uh, tree lightings and narrating them at the same time. Uh, the public works people did an outstanding job, uh, I think if you drive anytime of the day or night down in the downtown, you see those lit, uh, trees and there are more lights on the streets, uh, than there were last year. We made sure that, uh, the gazebo got some lights this year, um, evidently, we hadn't had in the past, but I think it looks very nice, and we got lots and lots of positive comments on the Facebook page, I think Dave told me we had over fifteen hundred?
I thought so, ten, fifteen.
Yeah, that, uh, had observed them there, and we know that a lot of people have come down and taken pictures afterwards, so I think that was a good decision in terms of how we handled that, uh, we'll just mention that it's our understanding that the, uh, Christmas parade is still on, uh, for this Thursday, uh, we've, uh, I guess I found out that they have not as many entries as they had hoped, but perhaps sixteen, is that the right number?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Uh, so, um, there are some neighboring communities that have made decisions to cancel their parades, others that are having much smaller parades as ours will be this year, but, um, that's put on by the J.C.'s, and I think, uh, we've already put out or putting out the signs so that people will not be parking in the spaces that will be used by the flows on Main Street. But we have reduced the number of, um, blocks that will be used based upon the smaller number of flows. Uh, would also mention that the next time, probably not at night, but in the daylight that you drive in front of this building, you'll see a very attractive, uh, bench, um, at Town Hall, uh, it's on the side that you enter for finance. It was donated, uh, to the town, it's made of recycled, uh, products, and, um, Mr. Mayor, you want to remind me the name of the group that made that donation?
Um, I wouldn't, um.
Is it Bags to Vengeance?
Well, that's who it goes through, but it was actually, um, through Trinity United, uh, Trinity Lutheran Church.
Aye.
And with them, and then they were working with the, um, the dump, um.
The Resource Authority?
Thank you, yes. They worked with them to keep that out of the dump area, so.
As I understand it, they are gonna be doing a second one, and we hope to be able to place that one, um, on Main Street on the side that the courthouse is located on. So, we're very pleased with the donation, it looks very, very nice, much better, much sturdier than what we had.
I think it was five hundred pounds of bags to get, it's a five hundred dollar, I think it's five hundred dollar bench.
So, uh, that's a new addition to, uh, what is located here at Town Hall, and then I would, uh, just mention, uh, since you'll be talking about future meetings, I want to look forward to January and suggest with your permission that a joint public hearing with the planning commission be held at six P.M. on, uh, January the nineteenth, which is your second, uh, meeting in the month of January. And I need to ask you that now so that we can make sure that we do appropriate advertising requirements. It's not that, I want to get to January any faster than I'm gonna get there, um.
Do you need a, a vote on that, or is it just a, no objection?
Yeah, if you all are com- yeah, if you all are comfortable, that we'll go ahead and advise the planning commission, and then we'll do the necessary ads for that.
Sounds good.
But we'll make sure that your closed session ends by six so that we're not interfering with your normal schedule for the second meeting of the month. And I understand that we do have a, um, water main break, um, in the town that's being worked on as we speak, so I will keep you all abreast if it's going to be an extended outage, but usually they have to discontinue service to some portion of the town in order to stop the flow of water, uh, to a degree that allows them to make their care. But rest assured, our public works people are out there working on it as we speak.
You know where it is?
Uh, I don't have the precise, uh, location, they said they did have to shut off water to James Hardy, so it's in that area of the town. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And I guess we get to the roundtable section, so, Mr. Penn, you have any comments like that? Mr. Dawson?
Aye, sir, my friend.
Mr. East?
I would just like to kind of reiterate what you said, thank everybody for the, uh, fine job on the park and getting them listed, let our public works folks, so it looks really good, it looks real good. And we need all the cheer we can get this year, indeed. That's all I have.
Uh, thanks, uh, Jordan, you done a great job the other night, uh, I really enjoyed that, I didn't get to come down, but you done a great job, Ms. Bircham. Thank you for getting it started early. The lighting, I suppose that town people love it, uh, real quick to you, uh, the people that you are putting in place, I think, is outstanding. People that you've brought in so far are, I think they're really gonna be the future of the town. Uh, I'm really excited about it. Jordan, Ben, Tom, you, you got a long way to go, you, you got a good ways to go in here, uh, hope you got a home. Uh, Oliver, uh, uh, Public Works, as you said, an outstanding job. And everybody around it that had anything to do with this, keep that, the Edgill jobs you guys are doing, I love, cut those trees and brush off the road. You know, keep that working up, cause it, it really makes the town look good, it really does. I, I know winners coming on, but please just keep it going, other than that, uh, thank everybody and hope to have a good holiday.
Mr. Clons?
I'm not trying to say no.
And, Mr. Reese?
Ms. Bircham, I think last time we had a meeting, we talked about, um, the Martin property, um, and the, the, the rest of that area over there, and there was some brief discussion, um, I, I think that, you know, based, and, and, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I think the town, that the council, and I'm, I'm saying this because I believe this is the council's view, is that we need to be, start going forward with taking that, that, the whole larger McGill Park, um, needs to be, you know, there needs to be a plan about what to do with that, and whether that's, um, you know, opening it up for some development or some other things, and I, and I think, you know, as long as there's no objections, that, you know, I think we'd like you to, to move forward with whatever steps are necessary to, to gauge interest and, and see what else, see who would be interested in doing something with that property. And a- as such, you know, make sure that we're communicating that with the community, um, you know, and that we're, are, we're opening that up to, um, as broad of a group of people as possible, I mean, I think you mentioned before that there is a housing shortage in town, and, you know, I'm hoping that we can, you know, do some work to improve the, um, housing stock, um, and at least diversify it and, and provide opportunities, I think that might help all of us, um, and, um, I'm thinking, I was gonna say something else, and now I can't think of what I was gonna say, um. Um, the, we discussed last time that, that the letter has gone out to the, to Mr. Martin about the, um, the, uh, gaining access to the rear of the property. Okay.
And I have had no response to the letter.
No response yet? Okay. Um, and so I guess we're going to have to make a decision, um, at some point about what to do if we don't get any response, but is when, do we know when those thirty days will expire?
I think it's, uh, shortly after your next regularly scheduled, uh, meeting, um, given that I'm not sure how the U.S. Postal Service delivers, uh, I think we ought to give that time, so I would say that the council should address that after the first of the year.
Okay. Um, so, and I want to make sure that everybody's had a chance to, to weigh in on that and make sure that I'm, um.
I agree with, uh, Councilor Reese, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just, I was just agreeing.
Well, I agree with Councilor, we need to, we need to, uh, we need to have a, uh, uh, a program or have, what are we gonna do with this property and stay the course? Uh, the Prudential for Homes in town, if you ask me, uh, we, we need that. We got Mike coming in, uh, Quality Homes, we'll go, if that's what decides to go there, so I will agree with the council, we need, we need to stay the course at the end of the thirty days, whatever it is, whatever the next step is, and we need to take it, just move on with it.
I completely agree, we've got an obligation to, to do something with that, uh, eleven acre parcel in the middle of the town. It's sitting there not doing anything currently for the citizens, and, and we can do better than that.
And, and, and to that point, I mean, I think, you know, I, I think you've been doing this, but I think that our citizens should know that we're also looking at other pieces of property the town owns and trying to figure out if there's other, you know, if they're empty lots or buildings that we've been gifted because of their condition. Uh, I know that there, we're just still doing work on, on Main Street on some of those buildings, at least last time I went by, it's been a few days. But I think, you know, our citizens should know that we're not just looking at that one piece of property, we're looking at all the properties that the town owns, um, that isn't being used for what it was intended to be used for, um, because I think all of those things together, you know, can make, you know, little, little chips that, that, that have bigger problems can, can add up, um, so. Thank you.
I guess it's not too much time. Um, so, a couple of months ago, the county offered additional cares act funds to the town provided for recognition of the hazards of our public safety employees have cons, uh, have encountered during COVID nineteen, as many of our neighboring communities have done. The council and the town manager appreciated the offer, but felt very strongly that all of our employees deserve such recognition, and asked Ms. Bircham to work on a plan to make this happen. I am pleased to announce that the interim town manager has identified savings in the town manager's budget that coupled with the county's addition-
that coupled with the county's additional allocations for public safety employees will allow us to give all full-time employees seven hundred dollars and part-time employees a hundred in a special check run in mid-December. The council appreciates the county's support as well as Ms. Bircham's in helping us recognize our employees for their dedication during this difficult time. So we want to thank all of them. And thank you, Ms. Bircham. And with that, just as a reminder, our next town council meeting will be December fifteenth, twenty twenty. We'll have our employee service awards at four thirty P.M. Closed session at five thirty. Public session starts at seven P.M. With that, now get a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.